November seventh, City of Nacogdoches regular meeting. Mr. Baldwin, will you lead us in prayer, please?
Let us bow a moment. Dear God, we give thanks to you, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for another beautiful day with our loved ones. Father, you are forever in our hearts and thoughts. We ask for your love, guidance, and protection in everything we do. Please watch over those who mean the most to us. As it is stated in Hebrews ten, twenty-four, and twenty-five. And let us consider how to stir up one another to love and good works. Not neglecting to meet together is a habit of some, but encouraging one another, and all the more you see the days drawing near. Father, we pray for compassion in the community. We pray for overcoming social issues. We pray for zero prejudice towards others. Pray for restoration and peace. Pray for hope over despair. May every decision be righteous in your sight, for I benefit in your glory. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen. You will stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we'll get started with open forum. We have a couple. Chad, would you come, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name's Chad Sazon. I live out on three sixteen Quillwood Drive, which is on the north side of East Main, out there on the outside of the Loop. I'm coming here today to speak on that road and that intersection particularly. From what I've ascertained, it's been over thirty years that this road's been plagued with numerous wrecks, claiming numerous vehicles, lives, and everything. Most recently, October thirtieth, a young teen lost his life. Another one barely made it in Tyler. A week before that, ten days really. My family and I are returning from vacation. We were in an almost exact same situation. And all three of my boys in the backseat, two dogs. We barely made it out. Like, we're lucky we didn't have worse injuries than we did. And just, just before the meeting started, I got a message saying, "I just had a close call from my neighbor. This road is dangerous." And for thirty years that I've, like I said, have been able to gather from my neighborhood from getting this petition signed, every single one of them has had a story of either a near miss, a loss of a loved one, or a loss of a vehicle from this intersection. And it's always almost exclusively the same scenario. Rear endings is constantly happening. And what I'm requesting today, and I've got other members of the community here today as well, and we're requesting a redesign of the traffic flow. We need this because we need, want to get home to our families. And at bare minimum, we need to turn lane for the left because people aren't paying attention. The one that hit me was going over the speed limit, didn't even try to brake. No signs of braking. And they're not paying attention, not going around like they're supposed to do, not slowing down or anything. And I was at a full stop. And it pushed us into oncoming traffic where we took a second hit. So, we need a turn lane at the bare minimum along that stretch, all the way out of town, because I'm sure there's been wrecks at other intersections of similar nature. Probably maybe not as much, but who knows? I can sure and go through the records and find it. And like I said, I only have fifty-four names, but that's from our community alone. How many nor names would I have gotten from the next community up? Or just walking down the road for all these houses that live on that street? And now we have a school as well, just up the road, right on the other side of the Stallings. People aren't slowing down. People are not paying attention. We need something, like I said, a middle lane for turning, a flashing light, a warning, something to get these people's attention and get them to stop crashing into each other. And so we can actually get home. And that's really all we're asking for, is some way to get us home safely. And that's pretty much resting my, what I have to say today. And if I have to, I can continue getting more signatures. I can continue hunting this down. But let's just take care of it. It's been far too long.
Thank you, Chad, very much. Here is his, and the petition. Okay, we have one more. Evie LeBlanc-Jones?
Good evening to the mayor and to the commissioners and to those here. I am a neighbor of Chad's. I live on the side of him. And when he, I was not in town when he had the wreck, but it touched me because of his family. I am in complete agreeance with what he's saying. Because I have lived there for thirty-five years, I have seen close calls. I am more nervous now as I've gotten older because I'm looking in my rearview mirror to see people that are speeding. Once they hit that overpass, it's a straight shoot and they flowboard. Even when they come around on the right side, they're not slowing down. They are going around at a tremendous speed. I am fearful for my life because I'm afraid somebody's going to hit me or someone that's coming to visit. People tell me all the time, "I almost got hit. People are flying out there." There does need to be something done in that situation. As he said, the fatality, that touches anybody, especially when it's a child. I don't know what to be done. He has spoken and said something, but something does need to be done for that particular neighborhood because something else is going to happen that's more tragic down the road if you don't do anything. And I appreciate you letting me say something.
Thank you very much, Evie. Okay, that concludes open forum. We'll go next to the consent agenda. Items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll go to the regular agenda. First item is consider approval of resolution casting the City of Nacogdoches votes for the Nacogdoches Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Mr. Kipper?
Mayor and Council, several weeks ago, the city council nominated Brad Mall for a position on the Central Appraisal District Board of Directors by resolution. The city by law has six hundred eighty votes. We can, you can cast, choose to cast those votes in any way that you want. You can divide them or cast them all for one candidate. The candidates that are on the ballot are Jonathan Adams, Robin Dolly, James Irvin, Mindy Winslow, and our own Brad Mall. So, you will adopt a resolution casting your votes in whatever way you see fit?
Okay, any council discussion?
I'll make a motion to give Brad all the votes.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, discuss work occurring in the right of ways, including fiber optic installation.
That's me?
Yeah.
Yeah, just for, this is something that, for the last several months since I've been on council, once I got on there, I started receiving calls asking me about the green plastic towers all up and down the streets of our neighborhoods. And, and I just, they were asking me, "What are they? Why are they here? What am I going to do about them?" And, and I didn't have an answer. And I still don't, and that's why I wanted the discussion out in the open here today. And this is not about hurting any business here in town or bashing any company or anything like that. It's a genuine, just an informational kind of thing. And I have at least one person, I think, that, that has an experience with it and wanted to talk about it. And I know these towers help us because it gives us fiber optics, which is a much faster speed for us, for internet access. That's a great thing. I'm just not quite sure why there's not a better aesthetic for these, installation of these towers. They've been pretty disruptive, I think, for the town. But Nacogdoches is a very adaptable town. Somebody even asked me, "Brad, that's been two years ago that they started putting things in. Why are you complaining about it now?" Well, it's because I wasn't on the council back then. But I do think it's a good thing for us to find this out. Maybe Pugi could come up here, Nathan Alders, he's going to speak. So maybe you could come up here and talk about your experience, and we can find some answers.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Okay. My name is Nathan Alders, and my wife and I live in Colonial Hills on Williamsburg Drive. And I wanted to talk to you all about, or tell you about my experience with the Vexis. And I've got some photos.
Okay, you pass them out. I'll pass them down.
They go, the photos go from when, when the towers got put, and when they, when they run the, the, cable internet. And then, and then the final product is the last picture. As I said, my name is Nathan Alders. My, my wife and I live there, and we've been troubled by that ever since they put it, started working on it in our neighborhood last summer. If you have any questions on the photos, let me know, and I can kind of...
So I don't know if everybody can see this, but the first photo is the tower next to a fire hydrant. And what all, did they, did you?
In the mud hole, and, 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 you know.
And they got rid of your grass and did something to your tree, is that right?
They did some damage to, a little bit of damage to a tree back on the property line back there. They had some of the dirt that they took out to, when they were installing. And instead of hauling it off, they pulled, put it around a tree, which was not good for it.
And was that due to a tree?
Well, it, sometimes it kills them. And this is a huge oak tree that we'd like to keep there. And it took me about two months to get them, to take care of that.
So did you start calling the company?
Yes. Yes, I started going down there and talking to them. And they started sending, every time I'd go, they would send a supervisor and two or three more people that worked under them. And I went through. The fifth one finally got something done. Every time, every time that I would go to call them back, the person that I had talked to before wasn't there anymore. And it was one of those deals where we just kept on. And finally, I got them to...
But they were nice to you, they responded?
Yes, they were very nice. Yeah, and made promises and, and, but anyway, I just, persistence is what, I mean, I just stuck with them, you know? And called them back. I had all of them's phone number and everything. And yesterday, I'm missing part of my stuff here, but, but talking, but we can, we'll get, get it done. But anyway, they, they told me that they would have a flat box. I noticed it, that AT&amp;T had a box that was, you know, up to the grade of the lawn. And so, I told them, I thought that they could probably do the same thing. And finally, they did. Yesterday, they, they got it in there.
So how long, how long has it been since you started calling?
About three months.
About three months, but they did fix it, right?
Yes.
Because here's a picture of the flat box, right?
Yeah, but, but they're going to, they're going to address the grass as soon as they can get grass in and put the St. Augustine grass.
So they're going to help you every way they can?
And I believe this, this group that I, I dealt with last i- is going to, going to do that. And I don't, I don't have their, I still, I have AT&amp;T at my house. And what I was going to say, one of the things they've done too, they come through and they, they bored through all the, the internet that I had. And we had to wait about a week to get that put back together. It was just, it's been a pretty good little problem. But I'm an old squeaky wheel, and I stuck with them.
That's what I was going to say. I've known Pugi all my life, and he'll wear you out. I promise you. He will wear you out, which is good. Let me ask, while you're still here, Pugi. We had talked about this earlier, Keith. Did you ever get with them to see if they would replace those towers and go to flat boxes?
Let me let Steve answer that because he had that conversation.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Bartlet, you were looking behind as if somebody else was going to come up.
Doing good. So we did have, after we did our ordinance, we met, in this case, with Vexis specifically. And we've also met with Conterra on other issues. So kind of make sure everybody understood the ordinance. One of the questions we asked was about retrofitting the towers back to flat grade boxes. And apparently, there's some impracticalities to doing that, which could involve rerunning, having to rerun and repull fiber, not telling you, "I'm the expert," or understand all that, other than their response was that it's a very low probability that they could do that in most areas where they have already put the towers in without incurring the expense of basically rerunning their lines.
But they did it for Nathan, right?
Well, I think there are some, some areas, and again, I'm telling you, I think, there are some areas where they had the capabilities and the way they were set up to do it. And in some areas, they didn't. And so, how you define the difference of those two, quite honestly, we'll have to get them to specifically tell you that. But, but to globally go into subdivision, which is how we asked the question. Can we go back and retrofit all these? Forget costs and activities and schedules. Can it be done? And their general answer was, it'd be a very expensive process that would involve redoing some of our cable. And that's kind of what we got. Did, did, did the city know when, when this started that there were going to be green plastic towers put in? Well, the city wasn't actually just notified that this was going to happen. All it would tell you, that Conterra and Vexis both had met with us, provided it with some plans, told us they were coming. And so, we, we did assume there would be some form of pedestals, just like there is with AT&amp;T or the old Southwestern Bell days even. So those pedestals have existed for decades. And so, we assumed there would be some kind of a pertinence there for them to hook up to. What it looked like, how big it was, we certainly didn't know. I mean, just to refresh your memories, these aren't permitted by us. So they're not under a permit system. These entities are certificated by the state, and they're allowed to operate in public right of ways. Now, they will ultimately have a franchise fee to pay, and we can lightly address that maybe. But in general, the state allows them to be here. They come in and they're here. They're trying to do their best to coordinate with us because we do conflict with utilities occasionally, as you know, we've talked about. But we don't know exactly their plan, you know, for what those boxes look like until they started showing up, sir. So did the city make any money on this? Did they pay any fees or franchise fees? So, so far the city, there's been no franchise fees paid because I think it's on a, and correct me, Jerry, on a per connection basis after they're up and installed, I believe.
Yeah, the fee is going to be based on the, basically the lines that are put in. So, and I think they have to report that on a quarterly basis to the state. And once those calculations are put into the state, then the, those fees will be coming back to the municipalities, including Nacogdoches.
I looked, I looked it up, and there's a House bill now, HB thirty-five thirty-five, that's going to cut all those franchise fees down to almost nothing. Is, have you heard about that?
I have not looked into that House bill. What I'm quoting to you is from the local government code. I think it's two eighty-three, which was House Bill seventeen seventy-seven, but that was passed back in nineteen ninety-nine. So it's been in effect since, I think, September one, nineteen ninety-nine.
I, I think what you're referring to is small businesses and not utility companies.
Oh.
Yeah, because I have to pay a franchise fee in, in my business. Most businesses do, but, but, yeah, I don't think it would include, I don't think the utility franchise fees will go away at all. That's, that's a source of revenue that they have that they're not going to let go of that.
What I'm speaking about is not the franchise fee that's, that they pay to the state. It's the access fee under that statute that ultimately comes back to the municipalities. And, and the PUC basically sets out how much is paid, and it's kind of a formula that they go through. And it, based on that statute, the language of that statute.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question. So, is there any way to, to narrow down those variables so that we can find out in which cases we actually can level, get, ask them to put in level, level, whatever you call them?
Sure, I mean, we, we can absolutely make the request and just find out where, where it's feasible and/or what's involved in doing that.
I'd really like to know the variables too. I mean, what are, what are the specific things that make it impossible? And we might be able to, I know in my ward, you know, you and I have talked about a number of these things where they've done rough things. But if we even know the, the specifics of what makes it feasible and what doesn't, then that would be helpful.
Well, the, it's, if you catch it and it's preliminary stages where they haven't spliced the fiber, that's the most expensive part of that project.
Okay.
Is splicing the fiber.
Makes sense.
Because I know when we used to put up the old gray boxes, AT&amp;T, that was for copper cable. And the reason why they was not underground is because marsh get into those and it deteriorates the cable. Now, fiber is a totally different story.
Right.
But it's truly, we sent a lot of our employees to be able to splice fiber. Besides, you haven't had a good eyesight. We gave up on it and we put it to a third party. So that's the most expensive part of, if you can catch that before they put that tower in, because to go back in and splice those cables, that's what has happened. They got the tower in, flash the cables. So now, they're going to have to cut it, which is a detailed operation, and then put the box in, level box in, and then splice it again. So that's two costs, high cost for putting that box in.
Okay, now that, that makes sense. And I know a few of them that have been switched out, and this is not us being in the middle of that, but when we've had a resident, talked to them, and we just connected phone numbers. The ones that I know were successful at that early on were ones where the actual casings were still sticking out and the fiber had not been pulled. So that kind of confirms what you're saying. And obviously, they can probably do that and not keep them underground. But I'll, I'll try to look in. If nothing else, I ask them to give us maybe a written rendition of when that's possible, when it's not possible, or what's involved. And we can share that back, back with y'all. Because honestly, this is out of my area of expertise, and I don't have a lot of detail I can answer.
And are they still in process right now?
Yes, probably for another three years.
So we can, for the future, make sure that they get level instead of those ugly boxes?
While they're sticking up?
Yeah.
So, so from the time we passed the ordinance, or a few days after when we distributed it, any residential property, is the way it's worded, gets a flat top box unless there's a specific approval by the city engineer, because there may be a unique circumstance. The commercial routes can still, we, under this ordinance, can still use the pedestals. And they, they have to be basically at a property line, which will push them, you know, not in front. Again, unless there's an exception given by the city. So I think we've got what was the problem kind of ironed out for the future. And I know that they are doing that now. They're putting in the, the at-grade boxes everywhere. So this ordinance kicked that off, and everybody was very compliant with it. And so I hope the future's different. Yeah, some people are maybe fine with it, don't care, but, but I think it may be interesting, you go down reggae and there's box, 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 box. Then there's no boxes because I think you told me that maybe they haven't quite got there yet. Yeah, there's some areas they hadn't been. So if they come in and do flat boxes, is that going to upset the other neighbors that have the towers, or? Mr. Mall, there's no doubt in my mind that, that we will receive phone calls of such, yes, sir. Yeah, you might disconnect that line. I'm not saying that in public. No, we, we certainly will deal with every one of them, and we have. And everybody's been reasonable, and I want you to know that these providers and installers have been reasonable. They all use some subcontractors and subs-sub contractors. There has been a lot of effort to, to clean up and fix some of the efforts from them, and even they've gotten new contractors in place in some cases. And I think our problems have been solved. Ours, ours were beyond just the pedestals. We've had a lot of strikes. We had marking, you know, and you guys have heard me whine about it. So that, that has improved dramatically. I want to tell you, we met with Cameron Miller, who's a VP of Operations for East Texas and Louisiana. Very helpful. He came by in person and spent hours with us. Our folks in the field came in with a hundred pictures. You know, I know Pugi brought you some good ones. We had a hundred like this where you left dirt, you left a mess, you hit a tree, you did things. Hit a gas line right? Hit, we, hit gas lines, hit water sewer. And so, we went through all these, you know, what are you thinking, pictures, and, and we left. But each one of, we spent time talking. And what we've done is set up a portal now where we can literally upload immediately photos of problem areas because problems are going to happen, y'all. And this is all about finding a solution quickly. And then we can let them know and identify it. We've also got now monthly meetings that we have, in this case, with one of the providers to go over, how are we doing, where are the problem areas? So the communication's gotten better. We've got portals to instantly get that information there as opposed to, you know, an admin person just trying to call in an address, or especially a homeowner trying to complain. So we're, we're kind of, I think we're perfecting this a little bit. So how would a homeowner, if somebody's listening out there and doesn't want, doesn't want their tower, or has a problem with it, what portal do they go to? Where do they call? So the portal is for us to upload pictures of problems. Oh, okay. So if anybody calls, we, we have a contact list, and our administrative staff all has that list, Mr. Mall. And so they can call and say, "I have a problem." And we'll try to determine which provider it is because realize there are other providers there too. And it may not be, you know, one in particular that's doing a lot in the area. So we'll try to figure out who the provider is. We'll try to give them contact information. And it's not unusual at all for us to also make contact with the provider. And I won't say that's universally every time, but we try. And that seemed to have gotten us through a lot of resolutions. Some of them were bad issues, sewers stopped up in houses, and it's things that nobody wanted to happen, including the contractor. But it's happened, and we've tried to get everybody, we, we're basically just in the middle, bringing everybody together. It's not our project, and it's not our contractor, but we're trying to at least help the citizens to at least get some resolution with the company. But I do want to tell you, the companies have been very responsive, and they have bringing their contractors back in and try to make things right. And I will tell you, that's happened. And I like the way that we're being proactive and we're doing all we can. I'm glad Pugi got his deal done. And we, we do, broadband is needed here. I mean, it's obvious that, that it's needed here. And you may want to set up a little side job as far as consulting to get that flat box done, Pugi on the side. You know, you got all phone numbers.
And I was going to tell you, but on the photo...
Come up to the microphone and tell us.
The, the names that's on the, that's the people that I went through before I finally got that done. And that guy, Adam, is one of the last ones. Got a star beside it because those are the two people that, uh...
That did something.
Who did something. And that, Adam told me, if, if anybody wants to talk about moving them, call us, we're there, or come down, like you did. I mean, I, I was, they knew me pretty good down there.
Yeah, I felt like I was going to a friend's house when you called me to come down there. They were like, "Oh, there's Pugi."
Come go down here with me.
Well, I appreciate you coming and telling your story today.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Does any of the people, we have people from AT&amp;T here? Y'all, would you all like to speak, or?
We're just making sure it wasn't us.
Okay.
Although, they're, they're good guys.
They're good, oh, they're...
They're good guys.
Okay.
But if you could help us get all the other services level, you know, we'd really be happy with that if you can.
He's got a truck and I got a chain.
Okay, there you go. And splicer and the, you know, all right.
Their service is good and level.
Thank you, Pugi, very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
So wanted to particularly thank you, both Mr. Bartlet and, and Mr. Baker for helping us with that ordinance so that we could prevent them. That, that was really very, very helpful, both of you.[1737.71]
Okay, next item is, uh, presentations and recognitions.
Just a minute, me getting my stuff together. I did all this, bow tie and everything. Keith, come on up here, please. I tell you, Keith is, uh, Vince Inter, interim city manager for the city of Nacogdoches now twice. And, uh, um, it's last, uh, how many months has it been since I, since May?
Nine months, three days and twenty-seven hours.
But you're not counting.
I started in May and I've developed a relationship with Keith that, uh, not only is this his, uh, he's done this before and he, he was a blessing and a Godsend after the former city manager left to where we could just kinda pick things up and go forward. And, uh, you don't know how much, uh, this council, uh, the citizens of Nacogdoches, your department, from the bottom of our heart, we appreciate everything you've done, Keith. And, and it's, that's not to be taken lightly. You know me well enough. I'm not gonna say something just to be saying it. This is, this is from us to you and all the items are in here or from Nacogdoches. Nice, so anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, man. Good job. Thank you so much.
Hey, we go out with the old and with the new. Come on in here, Rick. I haven't known Rick that long, but, uh, we started a process in May, June, uh, to where we spent a very, very exhaustive effort with our human resources department, uh, and, uh, Anita Hall let that charge. And, uh, we couldn't have asked for, we couldn't have hired a consultant to do what she did. We found a candidate that was a blessing and a Godsend. This gentleman's coming from Leander, Texas. Uh, he's coming, this is his home. This is where he wants to spend the rest of his life. This is where he wants to put his kids in school. This is where he wants out of the Austin area and he wants to be in a smaller community. And we are, uh, we, we had several good candidates and we could've chose fifty of them. But, uh, after we interviewed Rick and, uh, it was unanimous, not only with the council, but also the executive staff. And, uh, we're looking forward to working with him. And, uh, I, I know he's, he'll have his family here as soon as he can. Uh, there's, uh, housing issues where he lives, there's housing issues here. But, uh, he is in a rental home now and, and as soon as he can, everybody will be home. So, uh, anyway, we're looking forward to working with you and, uh, we just are so happy you're here, Rick. And, uh, this cart here is done by a local artist in, in Nacogdoches by the name of Christie Hurst. And, uh, hang on to it because it's pretty neat about our city. And, uh, everything here again is, uh, bought and, or made in Nacogdoches, Texas. And thank you so much. Thank all y'all.
Okay, that was a very short meeting tonight. Uh, it is, uh, six oh three and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, God.
Thank you.
God bless the great city of Nacogdoches, Texas.